Hey, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please surprise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment.
Here. Not seeing any online. We'll move on to the minutes. Everyone have a chance to read the minutes.
Yes.
I need to approve this president. It's been moved and seconded to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against. Passes three to zero. Mr. Comments and committee reports.
I'm sorry. Yes. So last Monday, I attended the extension board meeting. On Tuesday, I stopped by the courthouse and watched our county clerk Michelle and her crew conduct the election, which is always fascinating how much time ever in just everything that goes into it that the everyday citizen just makes their little circles and doesn't have a clue. It's amazing. So I just want to say thank you to you and all of your staff for the hard work that you've put in this year so far for not one but two elections. So thank you for that. Also, on Thursday and Friday, I had the NACO leadership class and attended the fair on Friday night and walked with the folks from the county. We passed out property tax sheet information and also just it had other information of what we're up to here in Atchison County. So if anyone didn't get one of those, we have some extras that we'll have available here at the courthouse. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Jack, do you have anything? Okay, and I helped or I hope I helped with the election again Tuesday night. It is a fascinating process. When you view it from this side of it, you realize how what a good process state of Kansas and county has. I wish that all had the faith that all states done it as thoroughly as we do. So commend our election people.
Thank you for your help.
Yeah. Well, I also participated in the fair several nights. I think it was for the heat and everything. I think there was excellent turnout. I think that people really do a hard job. I want to commend all of those that work both with 4H and those that have nothing to do with 4H, but they're doing everything from food services. And it all makes for a special time in the county. So I want to thank everyone involved. And then I had a chance to go to the vision of excellence award for Jonathan Mize, which was Saturday night, which is another hot event. But both hot and hot. It was well attended. It is notable when you have a business that's been around as long as they have and to get the attention that they have. So I want to congratulate them.
I agree. I also attended that. I just thought my, I looked at my calendar, what I did last week and stuff at Friday. Thank you for mentioning that as well. Yes. Congratulations to Blish Mize for the recognition.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is to canvas the primary election for our last election here last week. So I would call for a canvas of the 2022 primary election.
I think we had a good, good election and I need to thank my staff and you too as well as far as everything that you do to help, everything you did to help. We have a lot of older people, ladies and gentlemen. And sometimes, you know, Eric, with you helping them get their stuff out of the vehicles, it's very helpful. Because the bags and the ballots that they need at this time of the year can get pretty heavy with all the stuff they have to have out there. So.
Something that, sorry to interject, but that we probably ought to look into is lighting for the November election because I guess in November will be very dark out there. And it's something that we want to keep on the radar screen. So I know Wes and I talked about it the other night. Thinking of it, I just wanted to put it in here before we.
Yeah, I had always mentioned or thought to myself about having one of those little yard lights with a bench so that people can go outside and enjoy the weather when it's decent and take a break and utilize it in more ways than one. But the light is definitely something that's would be helpful. And I just gave you guys basically information from the election. We had a 5,005 voters that had appeared either in person in early voting by mail ballots or on election day. So we had a pretty good handful of voters, I feel. We had a grand total of like 11,156, I think, total registered voters, which we have been, we did a purge. So we were able to get some of those taken off. And we always are removing people as they move out of town and when they pass away, we always make sure we get documentation. We need to get them taken off the ballot or off of the voter rolls. We had 19 precincts, which is unusual for us as far as a full county election, 10 polling locations, and then we had the office as well. And this year, we had two different days that we did, well, actually three different days that we did remote voting. We voted in Lancaster, Cummings, Muscota, or no, Eppingham and Arrington. So, and then we went to the duly center as well. So which I think, you know, when we can get even one vote in the office, whereas maybe we wouldn't have that vote in the office, that's worth it. We also did extended hours for registration when it was still open. So we did extended hours in the evening for voting as well. So and we even hit a Saturday this year. So, but I have to thank my staff for all of their hard work and dedication to the elections. Out of the advanced voted, we counted everything that we could that came in in time prior to them being as challenged or provisionals. And I do have some that we received in the office that are in the stack here. 77 total provisionals this year. And I basically worked with counselor Henderson and Kaylee, my deputy, and we went through and categorized the challenged reasons and tried to put them in in piles and we went through each one. So we had to go through each one individually. So I have 77 here that I would like to present you with as far as provisional steps. And I have yes, I have my paper sort of here because I said I didn't print the reasons. So the biggest stack that I have and that you guys can see, basically we have 32 people who moved within the county. They went to the correct polling location and voted the correct ballot. We have, when a person does a provisional, it's basically because it's a challenge or a questionable vote. Not necessarily on the ballot itself, but as far as if they are a qualified voter. Name may be different, address may be different. We maybe don't have them on our voter registration rolls in the poll books. So there's a reason that that supervising judge at that location questions why why, why is not, you know, everything's not matching up? So why is that? So it's called a question ballot or a provisional. But all of these people went to the correct locations, got the correct ballot, voted the correct ballot. They just had not updated their voter registrations. So we have new voter registration cards for all of these people. And most of the provisionals have updated voter registration cards. So as soon as the canvas is over, we will get those cards when we have them worked. So there will be this same issue come November. So. But, but I do have 32 change of address, moved within the county, and they voted at their correct polling locations and received the correct ballot. Recommendation per KSA 25-2353 and KSA 25-409 is to count these because everything has been updated.
Except the registered voters moving in the county 32 ballots.
For a second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
And I have four voters who requested an advanced by mail ballot, did not receive it for some reason or another, and voted at the polling locations. And we did verification and they, there is only one ballot in our books for these people, with these being those four ballots. So I have for KSA 25-2098F basically says that a voter who has received an advanced voting ballot may vote a provisional on election day at the precinct polling place or where the voter resides. If the voter returns the advanced ballot, advanced voting ballot to a judge or clerk at the precinct polling place, the judge or clerk shall void such advanced voting ballot, which we have not received them back. So, but we have not received the envelope back voted either. So that recommendation would be yes.
Move to the registered voter request advance ballot, but didn't receive. Except for ballots.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
I have three lucky registered voters who had a name change due to marriage. Her KSA 25-2312316CA basically tells you when a voter changes name by marriage, divorce or legal proceedings, if such voter is otherwise qualified to vote, that voter shall be allowed to vote a provisional ballot at any election. Recommendation to count this is a yes.
A motion to accept registered voters with name change would have told from another county. Three ballots.
Correct. Three.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor to accept, say aye.
Aye.
And I believe all three of you were present when we had an instance, I believe it was in 2021 where another county borrowed our voter, changed information to match their registered voter or a person who was registering in their county. We had a gentleman who has been in the area for years, years and years, has been a registered voter, has voted. And when he went to vote, we had no information for him. I found out that another county had basically improperly taken his file and updated it to one of their new registrates. So this is basically a technical error. Unless it's impossible to determine the voter's intention, which is obvious that the voter voted his ballot, his intention was to, to have his ballot count, but being with a technical error per KSA 25-3002B1, the recommendation would be to count this.
The voter pulled from another county properly, one ballot accepted. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor to accept, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Comments, please.
You're doing a great job.
Um, we, we did run into a few issues in regards to a couple voters because of our July election. We had a voter who wanted to vote in the July election. She was told she was not in the right precinct. Upon further verification, we found that she actually should have been in the city limits due to an annexation. So because of when that election was and we had to close our rolls two days prior, then we were not able to update this information. So she voted provisionally again, and I probably shouldn't be using the she and he and they. But they voted as provisional again because the street file was incorrect, showing the incorrect precinct for, for this person. So there's two different statutes that re, in regards to this KSA 25-3002B1, which is the technical error. And then we have another one, which is a KSA 25-26A02A subdivision A for precinct boundaries, establishments or changes, requirements, designation of precincts. So basically the election precincts of all counties of the state shall be established or changed by the election officer in such a manner. And I think the annex, the ordinance for the annexation was missed because we didn't have others as well. But this one has been in the city for a very, very long time. So a recommendation to count this is a yes.
With the street files, incorrect, incorrect precinct, one vote be accepted.
It's been moved and seconded to accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
And we have one voter who, when they went to the polling location, mentioned that he had moved, but they had moved, but they did not know the actual address because it had been such a recent move. So we have a voter who moved outside the county within 30 days. KSA 25-3702 basically states that there's an affidavit that we could get. However, there was, there was no affidavits at the locations. None of our polling locations had this specific applicator, affidavit. But upon talking to the supervising judge, we were very sure that he had just moved or they had just moved. So we, her recommendation to count would be yes. So.
I'd make a motion to allow the voter move outside the county 30 days, one vote.
It's been moved and seconded to accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
And that one basically, since it was such a short time before the move, it allowed them to vote their former precinct, which is what he did. They. Um. We had one voter who had went to the polling locations, chose to not vote in the affiliated party that he, that they were part of and wanted an unaffiliated ballot. So the supervising judge had him vote provisional, had them vote provisionally and gave them an unaffiliated ballot. So the question would have been on any of the ballots because we have the question only. So the recommendation, there's two different statutes that basically pertain to this 25-3301C, which is the partisan primaries, basically stating that the supervising judge should have had him vote his own ballot without voting anything but what he wanted to vote for. And then 25-3002B1, which is the rules for the canvasser basically. Technical error because the supervising judge did not give the proper ballot. But since this was on all of the ballots, the recommendation would be to count this.
To make a motion for the voter request and received an unaffiliated ballot, what affiliated with a party, one vote.
It's been moved and seconded to accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
And we had one voter show up at one of the polling locations who did not have valid form of photo ID. KSA statute 25 dash 2908D basically states that if a voter is unable to or refuses to bring valid photo ID, that they have until canvas to provide that to the county clerk's office, the election officer. This has been done on this voter. So the recommendation would be to count it since we did verify.
I move that the voter did not show a valid form of ID, one vote, I think, counted.
It's been moved and seconded to accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a total of nine ballots that were cast as provisional. We had nine voters who moved within the county. However, they did not know where they voted or they went to their former precinct. They voted the wrong ballot. Sometimes we do this in regards to when the timing is getting close to the seven o'clock. We don't want to send them across county if it's quarter till, knowing it's going to take them too long to get out there. So we go ahead and have them vote the incorrect ballot. However, it's, it's basically a partial count. And KSA-3002B3 states when a registered voter has cast a provisional ballot intended for a precinct other than the precincts in which the voter resides, but located within the county, the canvassers shall count the votes for those offices or issues which are identical in both precincts. Canvasser shall not count the vote for those offices or issues which differ from the offices or issues appearing on the ballot used in the precinct in which they voted. So with that being said, there would be no county commission offices unless they should have voted in, which they would have gotten the right ballot probably, I guess, for the most part. East, West, Third are both commissioned districts. So, but if they, we would not count basically any precinct people or county offices or township offices if they voted in the wrong. So basically national and state levels.
So even though you're counting it partially, it's still considered approving the ballot?
I mean. These would have to be hand counted.
Okay, that's where I was just, you know, because it says they voted incorrect ballot, but then were voting to accept it. So I mean, it's.
Correct. Correcting. Go ahead.
It's a partial count.
Partial count.
That you count the ones that were common to both of the precincts. So it would not count precinct committee people and possibly county.
I make a motion to approve nine ballots moved within the county voted incorrect. To be hand counted.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I received, actually I received three in the mail just today. And these are mail ballots that were sent in with the secretary of state, because it's a primary and we will also be doing it at the general, we basically received mail on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Each of those days, we take those advanced ballots that come in the mail that are postmarked prior to election, election day or prior. We actually run them through and we update our, our numbers with the secretary of state. So that is something that is common now. However, if there are no postmarks, we cannot run them through the machine. So I have a total of 11 that were returned to the courthouse via mail. I have eight of them that we received prior to Friday, three of them that I just received today. The eight that I received prior to Friday, Friday or before were not postmarked. And I don't know, I've been trying to, when I send out letters or when I talk to people, tell them that they can use the Dropbox or they can bring it to the office. Those are some of the easier ways to do it. And or if they do mail it, to have it hand canceled. A lot of people can get that done, but not every post office hand cancels anymore. So I, I don't know if the voter just didn't ask for it, if they didn't know to ask for it, the post office didn't hand cancel them. But the eight that I received Friday or prayer were not hand canceled or canceled in any sorts. And of the three that I received today, because it's after the Friday, one of them is not postmarked, the other two are, and they are prior to the election. So I, at this point, there's a couple statutes or one statute that, to that's deal with it. And they talk about the postmark because we need documented proof basically that they were mailed prior to election. Because we can't accept them after the election unless they're postmarked and mailed before. But KSA 25-106 and KSA 25-1132 refers to that deadline. The postmark basically saying that they needed to be mailed on or before. The recommendation, though, I'm not, I'm not comfortable enough telling you guys as canvassers, I'm going to let you guys decide on that one as to whether or not these votes should count. Because of the fact that it's not the voter who didn't postmark them, it's the post office who did not postmark them. So it's like a third party. And I don't want to take away anybody's vote that may have mailed it back in time.
Yeah, I don't believe.
No.
Your worries.
Oh, yes.
That they're not postmarked except for two of them. And the two that were postmarked came in after Friday.
But they were mailed before.
Yeah.
Tuesday. Or one of them was actually mailed on Tuesday.
Post office have changed the way they.
I, I can tell you, we do have a representative from the USPS, United States Postal Service, who they talked to us in regards to how many are we mailing and when are we mailing and that type of thing. But these first eight that I had received, I scanned in the information and that has been sent to the secretary of state's office. And he has guaranteed he will be filing a complaint because it's not just Atchison County. This is something that understandably has been going on.
State votes is a lot in certain circumstances.
Sure, sure. And that's why I prefer not to give that recommendation and let you guys, I mean, I do have the statute, a little bit more information if you would care to look at it, look at it a little bit more. But I don't want to give that statute yes or no.
Pat, do you have anything to say on this? Well, I can tell you that the secretary of state has issued a guidance book and their guidance book says not to count. I think we had the issue come up in the election a couple of times ago and the the board of canvassers decided to count. And I think that's the reason why. That is the reason why my recommendation to Michelle was to not make a recommendation. I think that's probably the reason why she didn't make a recommendation. But the secretary of state's guidelines say that that's not to count because the statute, because the statute requires it to be postmarked. Personally kind of feel that you can't tell whether it's the voter, he didn't turn it in on time or whether it's the government that made the error in not, you know, not canceling the stamp.
First of all, so my opinion is we should count it. On the other side of this, if we are inconsistent in the way we adopt this, then it, I don't think these 11 votes will probably make a difference. But if we're inconsistent, we might be in an election where we make another ruling. It makes a difference in the outcome. I would move not to accept these 11 ballots.
Now, are they all, are, can they be split out? I mean, some of them could be counted or not?
Yeah, I have, I have two that were definitely postmarked prior to.
Today.
But the mail did not get them to me until today.
Okay, but they should have, they could have been accepted Friday.
Through the mail service, if the mail would have gotten into me Friday.
Yeah.
They were postmarked prior to election. I had one that was actually postmarked on July 27th. It did come from another state, but it came from a neighboring state.
To me, if, if they were postmarked before the election, I think we can count. No postmark, I probably wouldn't. That's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, so you're not comfortable giving your recommendation. County councilor is not comfortable giving her as recommendation. However, the secretary of state recommends not to accept them. That's what I'm hearing.
Correct. Because.
So I would second Jack's motion in accordance with the secretary of state's guidance.
And I made it for 11.
For all 11. Because, because the statute.
The two that were postmarked didn't come until.
It's a different.
That's a different.
That's a different state.
We had some that were postmarked and arrived before.
No, those were ran through already.
Okay. Yeah, you're right.
Right. Basically, in the statute, 1132, KSA 251132, it says the deadline for the receipt by mail of the advanced voting ballots by the office of the county election officer shall be the delivery of mail by the US Postal Service on the third day following the day of the election. Unless additional time is permitted by the secretary, which it has not been this year. So we did not receive these 11 prior to Friday with a postmark. we did not receive these eleven prior to Friday with a postmark. That was prior to the election.
So I made the motion to someone second.
Um, so I was in the midst and then that just validated, yes, I would second that motion based on the guidance from the Secretary of State.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded not to accept these eleven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass the three to zero.
And I'm, I'm going to probably ask Mr. Henderson to help me, um, an explanation of this next one. Um. I had a voter appear at a polling location. And when he appeared, he had his, he had a different form of ID other than a driver's license, which can be used. There's a lot of valid forms of of ID. It was a photo right, photo ID, it was a valid photo ID. Um, but when the information was put in the system, the voter apparently had already voted. Um, but there had been some issues revolving.
He reported that the.
Thank you.
That person, uh, that genderless person reported that that it, uh, wallet had been stolen and there was credible evidence of that. And there was, uh, looking back at the signatures did not appear to be the same signature. And there has been a report made to investigate that other vote that is counted in. And there's no way for us to take it out to find out which ballot it was. There's been a complaint made, a report made to law enforcement to investigate that. But, um, in this case, it appears that the person who was actually registered to vote did not vote at the polls and voted the provision about it. And so my recommendation would be to count it.
Okay, and this person did file a complaint? I mean, has signed on that there is that?
And I did, I did not talk to him, but I understand was quite adamant that that one had not voted.
Not knowing the situation, if they weren't willing to sign a poll, you know, uh, you know, investigation or something, you know, you might start to think that if if they're signing onto it, they're willing to to commit to that.
I would make a motion to accept one ballot voter had ID stolen, someone used it to vote and then voter went to.
It's been moved and seconded to accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass the three to zero.
Okay, I'm just done here. Thanks. Um, I have ten. Um, I can't say registered voters because these were the ten that were not registered. Um, we did have the hiccup with our July election and having closed our polls and then reopened them. But none of these ten were in our voter rolls. We do have information on these ten, so they will be updated before the November election. Um, but KSA twenty five two fifteen basically is qualification of a voter at primary elections. Um, basically says that registration is required. No person shall be entitled to vote at any national, state, county, or township primary election unless he or she is a resident of the voting area, a citizen of the United States, which has changed, and at least eighteen years of old and duly registered. So um, these people were not on our voter rolls.
I moved not to accept them, not registered voters.
It's been moved and seconded not to accept these two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass the three to zero.
Um, I I just mentioned that we had have a little bit of an issue with the, um, July election. I had a person who voted um provisionally in the July fourteen, but since our rolls were closed, they were not able to update their voter rolls. So this person was not registered and we did not, we were not able to register them prior to the election because our rolls were closed. So this person is not a registered voter. Um, and we have the same statutes that pertain to it that they need to have the registered duly registered voter, but then also, um, KSA twenty five dash twenty three eleven A three is in regards to the opening and closing of the registrations, which shows that I had to have the voter registration rolls closed twenty days preceding the primary or general election, which we did. So we were not able to register this person. So recommendation would be a new count on this person as well.
I moved not registered with the twenty day prior to watching ballot.
It's been moved and seconded not to accept this vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass the three to zero.
Um, the last one that I have, um, we had a voter come to the office, um, was asking questions, which of course we can't answer. We basically can read it to them if they need assistance, but we cannot give them any kind of advice or, um, any information. They voted in person. And then apparently upon going home and getting more information, they wanted to change their mind. So on on election day, they went back to the polling location and they were very adamant that they needed to vote a second time because they changed their mind. So I have a voter who cast an early ballot in person, went to the polling location on election day because they wanted to change their vote. Um, KSA twenty five dash twenty four thirty four is in regards to voting more than once. Um, and this is another one I don't, I know has been um, Council Henderson and I had talked about this because this could be voting more than once or attempting to commit this crime of voting more than once is a severity level seven non-person felony. So it is, and my.
That's not our decision.
Correct. Correct.
Up to the county attorney or the Secretary of State or the Attorney General to decide whether to prosecute. The recommendation will be not to count.
No.
Second.
I moved that to count, count, if voter who casted early ballot, then voter who polls one.
It's been moved and seconded not to count this vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass the three to zero.
So basically on all of the no votes and the yes, um, we do have voter registration cards. So like I say, all of that will be updated before the November election. So I would like to have a recess so that I can get these and run these through the machines. Um, I am going to have to hand count. All the ones here.
I'd like to move into recess. Tell the elected officer returns.
Or have you guys go ahead and.
Just continue or bring in our main.
Yes.
No recess.
Yes. So I'll be down as soon as I can get back down. I'll have an updated abstract for you and.
Yeah, you made a motion. It's been moved a second to recess into regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I know the feeling.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, Sherry Becker County Attorney, um, we have a PO for a new heat rack integrated air conditioning and heat unit for her offices in an amount of eight thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Make a motion to approve, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass the three to zero. Then we have, uh, next is the twenty twenty two second half appropriation approved. Uh, I'll read through them. The, this is it's already budgeted. This is for twenty twenty two. It's just the mid-year payment for half in most of these cases. And, uh, council on aging sixty two thousand five hundred. Any K multi-county health department in the amount of forty thousand. Memorial Hall trustees in amount of fifteen thousand. The guidance center, thirty six thousand five hundred. Achievement services in the amount of twenty four thousand. Soil conservation in the amount of fifteen thousand one fifty three. And the extension council in the amount of forty four thousand.
I would accept the bid here. Let's, uh.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass the three to zero.
It opening for replacing a small bridge with a cord. Maybe one bit, only one bit. We send them out just like we do everything. This one is Wagner excavating. And so it's a, it's an eighty four inch by forty pipe that we supply. And we bid to remove and build bridge structure and replace it is thirty eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Repeat.
Thirty eight thousand three hundred and fifty.
The demo and replace.
Mm-hmm. What's your recommendation? Was it, uh, look at everything and come back and make sure he's good with everything and come back next week. Now I have a PO for repairs to a motivator. It's John there six seventy two, eighty four fifty. Here's amount of nine thousand fifty seven dollars and forty four cents. And the flywheel housing leaking rear main seal. And replace the drive coupler, replace rear main seal, replace the rocker cover, adjust the valves while we're doing it while the motor is out. And there's a Murphy tractor in the amount of nine thousand fifty seven dollars and forty four cents.
That's second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye. Pass the three to zero.
And I have a, a, uh, award packet on bridge nineteen day E three of the state of Kansas. It needs to be signed. And then I have a PO of a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars, which is our part of that cost share. The total cost of the bridge was seven hundred and thirty four thousand eight hundred and seventy eight bid by B and B Bridge Company. And they are out of St. Paul, Kansas. So the worst part is we have to prove, uh, we have to prove the packet or the package which we all have to sign. And then at that time, then it's our turn, we pay upfront a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars.
Okay, can you repeat the figure that you had the seven hundred?
Well, they're different. I've just seen that. I got one for seven hundred and thirty five, four oh three.
Yeah.
Is that the one you have? All right, this one on the back page was different. I don't know why. That's what I have right here.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the authority to award contract in an amount of seven hundred and thirty five thousand four hundred and three dollars? It's been moved and seconded to accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass the three to zero. It's second part of that is the cost share.
Yes.
And the amount of that for the same bridge is us paying one hundred and sixty two thousand?
That's correct.
Even to your motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass the three to zero. Okay, over unfinished business, county councillor updates.
Uh, did you want to discuss the sales tax resolution?
Yes, I didn't know if you had any other updates before we got in.
Uh, there will be a hearing on the tax sale on August eighteenth at one PM. Um, that's for granting judgment on all of the properties and we'll see if there are objections, then they probably won't get resolved that day. So, um, any event on the twenty third, we should we we may know the date of the tax. Summarize it back, yes. And then the sales tax resolution discussion.
Okay. We are considering putting on the ballot for the general election. A resolution to submit to the qualified electors of Acheson County, Kansas, the proposition of repealing the nineteen ninety three countywide general use retailer sales tax and also levying a one, now this is could be, or it was also levying a one percent sales tax or three quarters cent retailers dedicated use sales tax and pledging the revenue received for the purpose of joint law enforcement communications and solid waste disposal in Acheson County, Kansas, to be in effect from January first, two thousand twenty three through December thirty first, twenty thirty three. It's got a ten year sunset. So we've been discussing back and forth. I think the main thing is we're not settled yet on it'll be a three quarter or a one cent sales tax. So this is going to be a uh, big step. The legislation approved recently will give, allow us to basically revoke this question. There's been years of uh, discontent between us and the cities over how this, uh, is been divided, how it's been used, who's has the authority. There's many, many different questions that the original, which was a general use tax that was then sent back to the different entities, the the county receiving almost, well, it was forty seven percent roughly thereof, the city of Acheson, uh, slightly more than that. And then the four cities of third class each receiving small percentages as well. So, um, and then they in turn on the original agreement were to hand over all of their portions to the county for use of the joint communications and solid waste. Uh, that hasn't been happening. Uh, we've had many meetings we've had over the years. Clearback Commissioner Ross from this, the, uh, city of Acheson that had proposed fixes to this question. Um, I myself had said on the sales tax committee, uh, we had recommendations that weren't accepted. So, um, I, I myself believe that we can do this on a three-quarter cent, I think it's an incentive. I think that it's a. It will be enough. To do these programs, we can't add. Other programs. To that, if we ask, if we would ask for the full one set and have one and have more money left over. We can't at this point, because of this legislation, we can't add like EMS to share in these sales tax. So that has been set. Now we can change it to a dedicated sales tax, which means it'll be. As the, like the ball field or dedicated tax, that has to be spent and kept within the parameter set. In the resolution, in this case, it would be joint communications and solid waste. Uh, other funds can be used. If there is a shortfall, there, there can be other funds used, uh, either property tax or fees or. If there would happen to be a shortfall, if we would ever, the three-quarters cent would become up short. There's also some funds that are left over in the current. System that can be utilized if there's a shortfall. So I, where do you want to go? I think we need to discuss this for the public, I think they need to see that we don't agree on everything here, but. Let's see a laughter over here, that we, we've been through this, but we, I think it's important that the public know that. There's, this is taken very seriously.
I can see your wheels turning, um, so yes, I am very, very excited. I know Commissioner Noel had said, um, I don't know if the word was contemplating, but I have my mind. Where it needs to be on as one of, of your county commissioners and. I'm excited to give the constituents of Atchison County, um, the opportunity to. To vote to alter, um, this sales tax from a general use, which just means just that. It can be used in, in a way, um, where if there's additional funds, it can be used differently. But to alter it to a dedicated, to where you know where your money is going. Um, and that when you pay sales tax, you know it's going to fund, um, the solid waste in joint communication, law enforcement. Communications of Atchison County, um, I am. I think it's great because the, I've talked to so many people throughout the county that don't have trust in their government and their elected officials. And I want that, I, I want everyone to trust what I'm doing and to trust. You know, the decisions I'm making on your behalf, because that means, I mean, as your elected official and county commissioner, District Three. Trust is, is what I want from you, so having the ability to alter a tax to dedicated. Um, and be able to know what's being collected, what it's used for. I do not, um, agree with setting ourselves up with a possibility of shortfall. Um, or the thought of having to use other funds, um, to fund these two services. Um, I, there's many unknowns, um, there hasn't really been an end up succession plan or, or look forward. Um, and we have a lot of needs in the county, I mean, from updating CAD systems, records, management systems. Um, technology, you know, those are just to name a few, our radios, um, that we purchased in two thousand and fifteen with a ten-year. We trade, we purchase new every ten years, in two thousand and fifteen, um, they ran around. A million dollars was the estimate that I got from our joint communications director. There's just so many, um, things, everything seems to be going up. Um, as far as our solid waste information, um, that I've received, you know, from our director out there is. Just, there's costs involved, um, if you ever gotten a predicament of having to close your C and D out there. Um, that is three hundred and twenty-four thousand approximately as a, as an estimated cost. You know, we're needing software upgrades, um, I, I know people in the county think that solid waste should be maybe more of a revenue model. And I think getting this dedicated sales tax to where we can plan for that. Um, and a succession plan of possibly an outbound scale, um, and just, just really digging into. What do these next, this gives us the ability to look at the next ten years and where we want it to go, um, by using sales tax, uh, rather than property tax. So I, I'm excited for the opportunity, um, to allow the voters to make their voice heard. And to have time, um, being, you know, just the second week of August. That anyone that has questions, please come to us, ask us, if you don't understand something, we want you to understand. Because at the end of the day, I want to do what's right for my constituents and I want you to, um, to feel confident in the job I'm doing for you. Thank you.
Well, first of all, three people sitting at this table are elected to make decisions. And there's always unexpected circumstances and we have to manage the money and take money very seriously. I believe three-quarters of percent is all we need to do this project based upon twenty-twenty-one actual sales tax. Uh, it would. It would fund the program for twenty-twenty-three. Uh, and it was the same as twenty-twenty-one. It would, we would have a fifty thousand dollar shortfall, which we have a fund called the eight ninety-seven fund, that's a million dollars. So we take the fifty thousand dollars from that and. With the rate of inflation, just look at the latest, uh, projections from the White House, six point five percent is expected this year. Three point five percent minimum for the next four years. Meaning that sales tax will grow exponentially because of higher prices. So we don't need one percent, we only need three-quarters of a percent to do, so. I think that it's, now that we're revoting this for nineteen ninety-three, three-quarters of a percent should be plenty to. Three-quarters of a percent more than enough. To fund this program for the next ten years, and that would include ideas like. Dropping tipping fees altogether, um, lots of savings to people besides the sales tax. So I'm in favor of doing the dedicated taxes a lot by the legislature in doing it three-quarters of a percent.
I think there's a lot of other benefits to revoting it, being a dedicated. Sales tax, we would also then have to revisit this every ten years, which. Is an accountability issue, I, you know, that we haven't had to do that since ninety-three. Uh, the, the voters haven't had a chance to weigh in on this, they've heard a lot of us weighing in on it. Uh, over the years, because this has been an ongoing persistent issue since almost the day that it was cast in ninety-two. The. Other things that are a plus, well, I'll even quote Justin Bourgeon, who said that it's generally bad business to have. A general use sales tax that does not sunset. That's what we have now. I, I agree with you hundred percent. To. Revisit it and every ten years, if there needs to be a correction, that, that will be the time. To, to make those corrections, I think, again, if there's a shortfall, we do have that eight ninety-seven fund, which can be utilized. This should go a long ways before we would ever have to, you would have to have shortfall after shortfall to. Eat away at that before we would ever need to revisit other fee structures. So again, in ten years, we would, uh, be able to, uh, when we've revoked it at that time, change, and I think you have a response.
Yeah, yeah, well, and I just wanted to say that, um, you know, in, in collaboration with our department heads, other elected officials. Um, that, you know, even though I believe that it needs to stay at the one percent. And just be, um, the opportunity to come over to a dedicated sales tax, um, for the constituents. Um, regardless if I'm a two to one, um, I want everyone to know that even though. Like I'm learning the politic part of this, that even though if my signature's not on a resolution of a three-quarters percent. I am. Excited for the opportunity and believe that changing this to a dedicated tax, um, is good for constituents. To know where their money's going, um, I just have hopes and dreams for myself to hopefully be elected again. And I don't want to be facing a shortfall and have a resolution that I signed sent to me saying, well, you're the one that did that. Um, because I truly believe we could use the, um, the revenue for needs, it just has been such a battle. Of who can use what and why, because we're inter- intertwined that. This is good for constituents of Atchison County to have an opportunity. To vote for a dedicated tax and no, and no other money's going, so just. We don't always have to agree, but just to know where we stand and why we stand and the decisions we're making, I think is important to convey.
I think we all three have, have very strong opinions on this, but. On, I'd say ninety-five percent of it, we're all, we, we agree, I mean, down the line. As I've been working with all of you and, uh, before you, the commissioners that served before, yeah, it's always been this. It's like the thing that won't go away. And, and maybe it will still, I, I'm hoping that this will finally, at least if there's a vote, and however it turns out, we will. Uh, have some closure.
Yes, well, and I think it's interesting, because being a new commissioner. I'm excited, I want to, to bring an end to this, and I think it's easy to understand that. This is bigger than any of us and having the ability as a constituent to vote. And alter to a tax that you know what's being funded and where, um, then it's up to them. It, it's up to the county to, um, to do what they feel they need to do to know.
This is very close to what Representative Epley had proposed back in, I believe seventeen, a three-quarters cent dedicated sales tax. And so, I mean, this didn't originate with us, but this is what it's kind of boiled down to through the. The process of the legislature being involved with our discussions and, and everything, this is the. I think the best solution that we can have.
I think I already said.
Okay.
Yeah, are we done discussing better?
Yeah.
I, I like the commotion to leave the resolution, uh, three-fourth of a percent. Can I interrupt? I, I noticed I had two typographical errors, uh. One of them, i- in, in the caption, the word retailer should have been after, it was before. Had it in the wrong place.
The ninety-three countywide general use retailer sales tax?
The second one should, it said, it should say, um, dedicated. Use retailer sales tax.
Oh, not anymore.
Yeah. After the. The, right before the words and pledging the revenue, that should say dedicated use retailer sales tax. Retailers appear somewhere else, I'm, I'm not exactly sure where, but what I have, what I have in the original isn't, isn't right. And then secondly, the, uh. Would, the expiration will be December thirty-one, twenty thirty-two, not thirty-three. So it'd be two.
You did those adjustments.
Well, yeah, but.
Can I make the motion based upon the, the adjustments?
If, if those are approved, yeah, sure, sure.
I make the motion. To approve the resolution based upon the adjustments the county councillor just gave us for three-quarters percent sales tax.
I will second that, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I. And not opposed to the ballot initiative, just the percentage.
And I respect it.
So.
Will you have a clean copy of for us to sign?
That's a red line version, so you can see. In the mix. It's free.
I'd like to have coffee.
Sure.
I.
And if you can just make sure.
I'm still.
I'm supportive of that. I've made. Thank you. The first one I gave you was the red line. This shows we're telling how readers perceive it. I know. And what is. We can all read, we can first have different perceptions, reading the same thing.
Fifteen oh eight.
That's what I was coming up with.
Okay, fifteen, okay, yes. And adopted the. Change your mind. Try. Anything more happened or?
Uh, no.
Okay. Backtracking a little bit, uh, we have two tax abatements. They do not have the order numbers on, the first one is. Property that is. See, and it's sixteen oh three-two, twenty-six road. Property had a house burn and completely. Destroyed the property and we as commissioners can partially, uh, help out the property owners by abating the taxes for the year. As a value of that property for January first of that year. So, because it was a total destruction and the properties have changed, uh, owners in the meantime, but we can, um. Abate this. By our vote, so, uh, do I hear a motion to abate the and change the taxes? On this property, which is sixteen oh three-two, twenty-six road. So it's been moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we also have the same situation.
So one of them would just have order one, zero, one, and the other would be order number zero two.
Okay. Second one was property. Eight thirty-three, Mound Street, Atchison, Kansas. Do I hear a motion to change the abatement on this property? Do I hear a motion to change the abatement on this property as far as possible? It's been moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we had. Request or invitation from the United Way to. Be as as a supporter uh to attend their annual leadership breakfast um Friday, September ninth uh twenty twenty-two. And uh with discussed this morning in our. Session that we would uh probably entertain the uh to. Purchase one table or to sponsor one table for five hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept?
I moved to buy one table.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's three to zero. Do we have any need for an executive session? Do we want to recess until the uh? Elections officer can come back or we have anything more?
Sorry, I thought of one more thing I just wanted to clarify with public if I could is. Um it was brought to my attention at the end of last week um that Commissioner Flynn did not. Support countywide fiber internet initiatives and I just wanted to clear that up, that that was. False um and not true. Uh we actually had a meeting with Rainbow this morning. Um and they have requested um ARPA, they brought a proposal for ARPA funds from us. Um and want us to make a decision by Wednesday of this week, um whether or not we're gonna do that. So. Um I've been at the table. I know my constituents want it. Um the county needs it for so many reasons. Um I just wanted to make sure that everyone had the opportunity during this meeting to hear that I am supportive of countywide. Fiber internet and cell phone service for that matter.
We all agree because I think I was included in on that and it's like we hadn't turned anything down or, you know, it's. It's pending.
Yeah.
So I don't know at what level we'll be able to help with a lot further discussions on that.
So are we wanting to have a special meeting to give them an answer by their deadline on Wednesday?
That's up to the chairman. I will not be available for us.
They have a very, very slim window for us to act and.
Which it stinks when they found out. We had election week last week and didn't meet, so it kind of put them off till this week with a really short window, but.
I'm moving to recess.
I would be up for. Meeting or making a decision over. I hate to leave them hanging without something when. The capital projects grant was designed for high cost areas and rural. And it'll be awarded this fall, so. That's nice.
I don't know. I I I don't know anything more now than and to uh to help my decision along than I knew when. You know, just an hour or two hours ago when they walked out, so uh I wish I had a chance to kind of. Talk with a couple of people before at least commit to that, so. I'll second your. Motion to recess until the election officer is available to finish the canvas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In county, I'll be more.
Well, I heard that it's most of Karen Tyson was by a third. She was the really was big enough.
I don't know what to find. I'd like to recall the uh.
Two one.
I know she did. But someone that was here today was telling everybody she's.
I'd like to recall the the board of canvass, canvassers and Michelle. You've got results for us.
I just have the results. I just brought the results page down.
Yes.
Um, we. Hand counted the nine ballots that we had and we were able to feed forty-five of them of them through the machine. So it takes a minute for it to run because we have to run on that machine. We have to run a full. Count of all nineteen precincts, so it runs quite a bit of, talk about trees, right? Um what I do have is I have two copies here. I I would like for you to um if if approved to go ahead and sign. There's a section for um Democrat, Republican and the nonpartisan, and I will be more than happy to email them to all of you. Is there any race in particular that anybody's interested in?
Do we end up voting yes or no?
I am thinking the constitutional question, Acheson County. Um you want to talk about a close race? We have one. Yes, was two thousand four hundred and ninety-six. No, was two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight.
Wow.
Fourteen votes.
Yeah.
They were saying that.
I think we were one of the only ones and it probably um. I mean, yeah, we were one of the only ones in northeast Kansas. I think we were surrounded by a bunch of the notes, so. Um, yeah, and we did have a very close race. I I mentioned it to you guys earlier. Thank you. I mentioned it to you guys earlier. Um the Secretary of State has sent out an email to all county clerks in regards to the Republican. State treasurer race. There has been over four hundred and twenty-one thousand. Votes cast in that race and it is like barely over three hundred vote difference. So it's a very high chance that we may have to do a recount on that. And if that's the case, I'll just get pool workers to come in and. We'll just.
So we have to.
No, I I don't believe so. Um it it depends upon the candidate asking for the recount, though. Um they may have it be a machine recount of the whole county, or it may be a hand recount of only a certain amount of precincts. Which we did the post-election audit Thursday. Um we started it at ten. And we, because because this actual um race was within a one percent. Difference, we had to, we had to do extra precincts. So we had to audit three precincts out of nineteen. On just this, on just this one. And um all of our audits came out perfect, so. We were approved by the Secretary of State, so. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I love it when it all kind of comes together, so.
Now, so what are these individual reports or just the?
As what, as a whole, but I do have them. Um since it is a partisan primary. I have the Republicans and the Democrats separate, and then I have the question as the third part, so, but it is all one report. So.
I moved to accept the election results and canvassed.
Second, to accept the report, all in favor, say aye. Zero.
Let me start to, I'm just gonna move the signature page to the front. I make it a little easier. Anybody have any questions about the election? You have any friends, neighbors that like to do a lot of write-ins for a lot of funny goofy animated characters? Um I have a job for them. November eighth, I would love to put them to work on our review board. Um as you can see. Um I mean, you you guys voted, so you've seen what was on your ballot. I have a nine-page Republican abstract because of all the write-ins. Oh, did you look at it? I'll send it to you.
God.
Go make it to some. They're actually human beings, right?
Um, well, yeah, there was a lot of human beings. Um but there was a lot of, they're Snoopy right off the get-go. Snoopy.
That was our first Snoopy.
Yeah, but no, I had a lot of people.
So we could start something on social media, see who you can uh write in that nobody else is.
Right, and I understand it to a point um. As somebody's way of, oh, there's a Minnie Mouse, there's a number just O-N-E-one. Uh but I understand it as far as some people that want to do that because they want to make sure their vote is going to count. Um but what what people don't realize is the, because you can tell if I wrote in something Zorro or something. And I see it on the report. I know they worked my thing, but it it's just. Right, right. Um but it's kind of.
Being smart alecky.
It's it's hard when we have, I mean, what time did we leave? Two, two o'clock?
It was, it was one thirty, I think, from the eight.
Yeah.
On Wednesday morning, yes, sir.
Was daylight open or?
Oh, we didn't even think about that. If we would have called you, would you have went and gotten donuts for us at two thirty? Probably wouldn't. So, no, it was great. I mean, um if we've we've been later, we've been later, so but a lot of the timing. Depends upon the write-ins, so. Perfect. I'll get these scanned in and I'll get Secretary of State notified that we've canvassed and I will get you guys emailed.
Didn't notice that word. All in favor, say aye. Or adjournments.
Yeah, next, well, that actually, we can see we give one day. Who put this county?